All right, thanks Brian and welcome everyone to this November 27, 2023, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We are going to start tonight with a proclamation about Arbor Day, so I'll hand it over to the mayor.
I actually have two, if that's okay.
That's fine. You can have as many as you want.
Yeah. Two's good, two's good. I would like, if somebody is here for the Arbor Day proclamation, if they would like to step up front?
Want all of us?
Yeah, all of you, come on.
We got fans in every room.
That's perfect. And I will read this and then we can take pictures and anything that you guys want, okay? That's right. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic viability of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim October 28th as Arbor Day in the City of Homewood and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. I further urge all citizens to plant trees and gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and all future generations. Excellent. Scott is yours.
Thank you.
And if you want, I know Jen will take pictures.
We've got some of our swag from last year too to hold up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we do the whole thing, is that all right?
Yep, not a problem.
Banner, you know, we like our t-shirts and our banners.
Come on this side if you want.
Yeah, I'll pull it through the right way, so.
I'd really like to commend the City of Homewood and the Homewood Tree Commission, Homewood Environmental Council, for promoting the Tree City USA program in Homewood. My name's Kate Wiswol, I work for the Alabama Forestry Commission, I administer the Tree City USA program statewide, but y'all have done an awesome job really elevating the understanding of your community about the importance of trees and the Tree City USA program, so congratulations.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Here's one, here's one.
No, no, I'm fine, I'm fine, this is good.
Stay put, stay put.
One more, one more.
All right, go right, go right. The mayor, the mayor, ready? All right, one, two, three.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Likewise, appreciate it.
Yes, good to see you, appreciate it.
And then I have one more for Small Business Saturday, which of course was this past Saturday, so if anybody was out on Saturday and saw how busy our Homewood shops were, it was insane. So whereas Homewood, Alabama believes that small business is the backbone of our economy and the glue that holds communities together, and whereas over 65% of the 33.3 million small businesses in the US, in the United States are profitable, and whereas 99.9% of businesses in the United States are small businesses and account for 64% of all new jobs created every year. Whereas 99.4% of Alabama businesses are small businesses and employ 46% of Alabama citizens. Whereas Homewood, Alabama supports our local small businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Whereas residents of our community and the communities across the country are asked to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So now therefore I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim November 25, 2023, as Small Business Saturday and thank the residents of our community and communities across the country for their support of small business merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And that's it.
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're going to start tonight with an invocation by Counselor Harden, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for all that you've given to us. As we get through the Thanksgiving weekend, we ask that you please bless the City of Homewood, bless the citizens of Homewood, and bless our country. And as we move into our holiday season, help us be mindful of those who are not as fortunate for the poor, and please watch over all of the citizens of Homewood. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harden. Mr. Seacrest, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton?
Here.
Here.
Hallmark?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Nels?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Arden?
Here.
President Walton?
Here. All right, so we got a full house tonight. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of November 6, 2023. Those were previously distributed. I entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of said minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved, 11 to 0. Next, we have ward vacancies. We did have a ward for Historic Preservation Commission that closed today, and I believe we had one applicant or...
We did, yes. There is one other person who's expressed interest, so I am open to going ahead and making the appointment or carrying it over until our meeting on the 11th so that I can talk to that other person. Should I go ahead and appoint?
Yeah, I think we...
Okay, so the person who applied?
Yeah, I think we should honor our deadline.
Okay, all right, perfect. Then I would move to appoint Josh Quattlebaum to the ward for spot on the Historic Preservation Commission.
All right, so we have a motion for Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second for Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0. Congratulations to Mr. Quattlebaum. All right, we do have one change to the agenda, or one change that appears in two places to the agenda tonight. It appears on both the committee referral agenda and the other new business agenda. We're going to drop those from the agenda because they're not quite ready yet. It is 11, I'm sorry, 17/11/23, request to set a public hearing referral to the Planning and Development Committee for consideration approval of amendment to the previously approved final development plan at 8:15 Greens Springs Highway for the Edge Mixed Juice Development Project. There are a couple other steps that need to be taken for that before we set the public hearing or consider it in committee, so this will likely come back in just a few weeks, but for tonight, we will go ahead and drop it from the agenda. So with that, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gualtney, second for Ms. Gere, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved, 11 to 0. Excuse me, which brings us to the consent agenda. I entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also approved, 11 to 0, which brings us to old business. First item, 01/11/23, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with AIDM to accept a stormwater grant for $150,000 brought to us by Cale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on November 13 and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved, 11 to 0, and will be resolution 23169. Next item, 02/11/23, request to authorize the mayor to sign flock camera renewal with the addition of several new cameras brought to us by Chief Ross and J.J. Bischoff. Mr. Bischoff, I understand that we need to carry this item over?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then we will carry that over without objection to let them hammer out a couple of details. All right, next item, 04/11/23, request permission to remove two pine trees located in the city right-of-way at 308 Devon Drive, brought to us by Cale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, on the, let's see, that would have been the 13th, is that right?
I think so.
I believe. Committee met and after hearing the case, the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement. The motion was made by Counselor Nels and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right, so we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved, 11 to 0, and will be resolution 23170. Next item, 05/11/23, request for permission to work in the right-of-way to install an accessible parking space at Urology Centers of Alabama, brought to us by Andy Olds and Cale Smith. And another report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, on the 13th, the committee met and after hearing from Mr. Olds, the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement. This motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Nels. And just to clarify, the property, the subject property has one accessible parking in its current configuration, but it enters the building on a different level than the proposed handicap spot, so.
All right. All right, any questions or comments? Not, we got a motion from Public Works, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved, 11 to 0, and will be resolution 23171. Next item, 06/11/23, request for consideration to permit front yard retaining walls in the right-of-way at 13, I'm sorry, at 3019 Firefighter Lane, brought to us by Jason Hale of Willow Homes and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with another report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, on the same evening, we met and heard from Mr. Hale and Mr. McNair regarding the request for the retaining wall to remain in the city right-of-way. The committee voted that evening for a 4 to 0 recommend for approval pending the proper indemnification agreement.
All right, so we do have a motion from Public Works. Mr. Pugh, do you mind coming up? And I apologize, I was trying to do two things at once during committee. So can you explain to me again what the issue is here?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think Brian probably has some pictures.
Could you put the pictures up from last week, or from...
Yes, all right, hang on just a second.
So there was a, when the new house was built there, there were no retaining walls or anything shown on the plans. Later on, they started building some retaining walls. We asked them to get a permit and submit some engineering for that, which they did. But here's the retaining wall. My only comment was that prior to issuing a CO on the new house, that I would need a final survey that verified two things. One, that the coverage of the lot did not exceed 50%. That was a concern. And that these retaining walls were indeed behind the property line. When they built them, there were some stakes out there that appeared, that were survey stakes. I think possibly someone must have moved them or something, because when they built it, they built it behind those stakes. But recently they requested a CO and they turned in the survey, which showed that unfortunately, Brian, on the next page, if you can see where the front property line, which is the heavier line at the front toward Firefighter Lane, it's the heavier line, the, yes, right there. So the retaining wall extends into the right-of-way.
How far?
Roughly four feet. It's not marked on the survey, but it looks to scale to about four feet.
And just to be clear, the wall was built without the permission to work in the right-of-way?
Yes, that is correct.
So this is retroactively being requested?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Any, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, the, I'm trying to understand why the retaining wall is so tall. The grade, it's not a steep, I mean, a steep incline there. I mean, I've seen where you need retaining walls, where you've got, you know, very steep incline. This is really not, I mean, isn't it comparable to the house next door that I'm seeing that it's like fairly, it's fairly flat? So I'm trying to understand why it was so tall and why was there not any type of due diligence done prior to constructing this?
That's a question probably the builder would need to answer. Jason's here.
And how tall is that retaining wall?
It's about six feet.
Is it 12 feet tall?
No, no.
It's like five and a half?
Yeah.
It's as tall as that van right there?
Yeah, I was about to say.
And the van's on the street, so. Six? Yeah.
It's less than six feet.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Boy, it looks tall. Taller than Barry.
What was the lock coverage, the final lock coverage?
49%.
Am I right? Neither house, neither house, neither of the houses on the next door houses have 40?
No, this one, the homeowners wanted a flat space. They're an older couple, and they wanted to build a, come out to a flat space. They employed an architect to design where the lot was more flat. The others do have about 10 feet of fall. There's more fall there from the back street than you think. I mean, I've built off four of those houses. Anywhere from about eight to 12 feet from Firefighter to the other one. So there's more fall in those lots than it probably appears. And, you know, obviously, a lot of that plays out in the footprint of the house, but what you have is, you know, you do have like a good slope in the others. See, all, both of them have probably 10 steps, 10 steps in the yard to get up to them. And that's the retaining wall that I was envisioning based on the slope. So the slope grows as you go down the street that way a good bit?
Yeah. Yeah.
See, look at all the steps. So you don't have a wall, but you do have a steep slope and a lot of steps there.
Jason, I know I ask this a lot, but what are the options? I mean, if we don't grant this, I mean, do we have any options to help try to meet you halfway with this?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know about that. I mean, I don't know what halfway would look like.
I mean, it shouldn't be there, and I understand the circumstances that led up into, you know, to it being there. But, you know, a lot of that was not due diligence on, you know, the construction end, and I just want to be fair to neighbors and, you know, to our, you know, ordinance and variances.
No, I totally understand. So, no, I agree. I mean, we didn't realize the setback was that far. You know, if you really go back out there and look, the streets right-of-way goes pretty far into the yard. We did leave plenty of room for a sidewalk in front of it, which the others don't have, if the city wanted to add a sidewalk at any point. You know, we followed all the procedures on permitting, and it's structurally a very sound wall. As far as the neighbors, I know all the neighbors. I'm not aware that they've complained about it. It's not actually very visual from their houses. It's more visual from the front. The neighbors, like it barely sticks out above their yard. So I don't, I don't know that that's been a complaint. I mean, I still actively have talked to the one on the right today. I'm not sure that that's a complaint of theirs.
But the owners who are, you know, in violation, what, or do they have any options for suggested any?
I mean, I think, I don't know what it'd be. It'd be $100,000 to tear the wall down. So if that's, I mean, that's what it costs to build it. So there's no way to cut it in half or anything. I mean, it's built solid all the way through. It's got drainage, water lines, gas lines, like all of it goes through that, in addition to the handrails and talc and all of that.
And Wyatt, didn't you say that the reason, because it looks basically like there's a fence in the front yard, and didn't you say that that's because of the height of the wall, that because it is so high, there's required to be a railing to prevent falls?
Yes, that's correct. So there's a walking surface.
On the other side.
On the other side. It's grass, but that's considered a walking surface. You could walk right up to that edge. The code requires in that case that there be a guard installed, and that guard has to be at least 36 inches high, and the openings in it can not allow the passage of a four-inch sphere and things like that.
Mr. Pugh? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gualt.
You mentioned that there was engineering associated with this project, so I assume with a wall of this size that it required a footer?
Oh, yeah.
It did.
So do we not inspect footers in the building process? So I'm just trying to figure out why we didn't catch this earlier, because it seems like the city has some culpability here too.
Okay, well, that's a fair, that's a fair observance. The, there were no inspections done on this wall, and going back, I don't know, there's nothing in the record of inspections that were done on this wall. By the time I became aware of it, it was already in process.
But it was permitted, right?
It was permitted.
And we do inspect footers?
But mostly because, yes, we did. But mostly because I wanted to ensure that they had engineering.
Yeah.
Bobby did inspect it, but I mean, I think he was on the same assumption as we were.
That the stakes were in the right place.
Correct. I mean, he does a good job. I think it just was misleading. It's also behind the other ones on the street, so visually you don't have any reason to believe, like that little one y'all showed, it's actually slightly behind it.
Mr. Jones?
No, I'm just trying to reconcile the fence also, that if a front yard fence is not allowed, are we circumventing our, I'm just trying to understand that.
But the barrier, the ordinance requires a big wall to have a barrier.
Yeah, I think the ICC supersedes our ordinances, probably, the international code.
We deal with that conflict a good bit, and there's two options, you know, but it's 30, I mean, we've worked with Bobby, with the inspector of the city, a good bit on it, because it's required, and once it's 30 inches over, I would agree with you, it's kind of, but it's a safety rail versus a fence, and so. No, I'm just talking about logistically, do we have to approve it as a fence? Even if we require it, I didn't know if it is past the front building line. I'm trying to understand if it's required for us to approve it.
Yes. So it is, it's a guard. It is a guard. The code would require it. Unfortunately, it was in place before I became aware of it as well. I did have a retroactive discussion with the designer, and I did come to agree that it is a required guard rather than a front yard fence. It is required. I mean, there's no way around that.
Is it necessary on the sides?
It's not necessary wherever the drop is less than 30 inches. So if it tapers up, where it gets to 30 inches or less, it's no longer required.
And I have a quick question for the developer. So I missed the committee meetings. So did the owners have the yard built up and flat?
I mean, pretty close, flattened, flattened from where the rest of the ones on the street were. It's at the grade originally, instead of sloping, it just flattens, you know, at the wall. That is, we didn't raise the grade of the property.
You didn't? You just moved it back to the flat spot?
Instead of having that steep slope in the front yard, it's just a wall. Really, that's the only difference. That is the grade of the ones on the street.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The house is actually as low as it could go without being underground on the back. So it's, it's not jacked up. It just is, there's more slope there than I think people appreciate.
Okay, Mr. Wolverton, did you have something?
I was just going to ask about that. I'm assuming it's following the tree ordinance, but when you said the property was 49% impermeable and I'm seeing all the stonework and everything, I just didn't know, like the, is that all in compliance currently too?
I think so. I didn't check on that, but I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it is. Scott's been by. We've worked with Scott closely to make sure we weren't, it was tight because of the walls, which kind of snuck up on us too, because they got added along the way as far as the caps, and we had to measure the tops, we had to...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot that had to work out.
Yeah. We wanted to use a permeable surface, but that's not been approved yet in the city, that that's an offset, so.
And Scott will do a final zoning inspection, and he will review the trees, just to verify. But I think they are.
Anybody else?
I got one comment. So my issue is simply that the wall was built in the right-of-way without permission, and I think that was done innocently. I'm not trying to cast blame with that, because I think there, there at least seemed to be reasons why that was done. But from my standpoint, we've had this happen before, maybe even times where it wasn't as quite as innocent, and sometimes where it was innocent. And, you know, I think in the past, we have denied the variance simply because it's retroactive, and I want to be fair to the people that we've done that with before. And so that's where my position on it is, is trying to be equitable to all residents about how we handle these. I certainly appreciate the size of the wall and the cost associated with it, and I'm sympathetic to that. But that, in my mind, doesn't play into handling them consistently from house to house. And so, anyway, that's where I am with it. Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Yeah, we'll do a roll call. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Walton?
Yes.
Gere?
Yes.
Hallmark? Yes. Wolverton? Yes. Sims? Yes. Jones? No. Smith?
No.
Nels?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Arden?
Yes.
And Chris Wal.
No. So that is approved, 6 to 5, and will be ordinance 2372.
It's a resolution.
I'm sorry, resolution 23172. I apologize.
I would say that this indemnification agreement is going to be recorded in probate court, so if any reason down the road the city needs to be removed, we retain that option.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't understand. Yeah, I get it.
That remains on the D.
If you sell the property, whoever buys is bound by this thing.
All right. All right, thank you. Next item, 07/11/23, public hearing set for December 11, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. for permission to vacate Drake Street and adjacent alley rights-of-way for Piggly Wiggly Development, brought to us by McConnell, White, and Terry Realty and Cale Smith. We will carry this item over for our meeting on December 11 at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 05/10/23, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of condemnation of the accessory structure at 2819 Crescent Avenue, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Public Safety, Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met last, or two weeks ago, and voted 5 to 0 to recommend to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Nels.
All right, thank you very much. With that, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Pugh, I think I probably need you for this one as well. All right, I know that we've had some developments on this one.
Yes, that's correct. This has been, we've been pursuing this for well over a year now. About a year ago, the abatement board voted to consider this an unsafe structure. At that time, an unsafe structure notice was sent. I didn't get any response from that one. I sent another one mid-year. I got a signed certified mail receipt back, but no further communication was attempted. After we set the public hearing and we sent a notification again stating there would be a public hearing, we also sent it to the mortgage company. I did receive a phone call from the owner who's resides in an assisted living facility. And she said that there is stuff in there and she wants to keep that storage, so she asked if she could fix it. I said, sure, but she didn't have a plan at that point. Well, this morning, I received a phone call from a gentleman who said he was her friend, and he had worked all weekend, tore the roof off, rebuilt it. So I said, well, you need to come get a permit. So he did. And this is where it stands. And this is where it stands, they, they, they did a pretty good job. They, they tore the roof off, rebuilt a whole new roof, even called for an inspection this afternoon, so I believe just under the wire, they've, they've abated, they've abated the nuisance.
So, well, let me do this, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Pugh, just to make sure I'm understanding you, Brian, if you could put those pictures back up again, thank you. Is it your understanding that with the work that's done, that the issue has been abated at this point, and is this is now a safe structure?
Yes.
Okay. This is not one, this is, and just to be clear, this is not one of the situations that we've had in the past where work still needs to be done to, to address the issue?
No work needs to be done to address the unsafe structure.
Okay.
Issue, there's some maintenance issues that they're going to deal with, but that's separate.
Sure, but with regard to the safety, they have addressed that at this point?
Yes, yes, they have.
All right. Well, since they have addressed it, I think that's the appropriate.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, motion for Mr. Jones and a second for Mr. Gualtney. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is dropped, eleven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
Sir.
All right, next item, ten-ten twenty-three, public hearing set, public hearing held on November sixth, twenty-twenty-three at six P.M. for consideration to rezone thirteen-hundred Columbiana Road from I-two to C-one. The applicant is Eric Rogers of Progressive Properties, P.L.L.C. The owner is Second Presbyterian Church to permit construction of a twenty thousand one hundred twenty-five square foot, single-story medical office building. This comes from the Planning Commission with a four to five unfavorable recommendation vote. We held the public hearing at our last meeting and carried it over to allow the parties to have some time to talk, and I see Ms. Sellers is up at the podium, so if you will, tell us where we stand, please.
Sure, we feel like we've made a lot of good progress since the last meeting. We've been having good dialogue with Grace Church, which is, if you'll recall, we're purchasing from Second Press, and Grace is the church that currently leases the space. And so, those conversations have gone really well. I was back and forth with their attorney today, trying to work out an arrangement where maybe we can make everyone happy. I don't know the details of that, I don't know the particulars of that to be able to share tonight, but I would like to ask for some more time for us to continue those discussions.
All right, so with that, we will grant you that time to do that. We're certainly happy to hear that things are progressing and would encourage you to continue to talk, and, and so we will carry this item over without objection and see you with an update.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next item, twelve-ten twenty-three, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to approve the final development plan at five-oh-one Scott Street. The applicant is Eric Kendon, and the owner is Dr. Michael Kilgore. This is centered around the interior and exterior renovation of the existing Homewood Animal Hospital that would be expanded in size to three thousand five hundred eleven square feet to accommodate a combination of office examination and treatment services, as well as expanded parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. Comes to us from the Planning Commission with a nine to zero favorable recommendation of the item, and we will start with a report from PND.
The committee voted five to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Gualtney and seconded by Counselor Wolverton.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Andrus, and with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Smith, are you gonna, or is someone else gonna speak to this? I don't, I don't.
I haven't seen them. Oh, we are here.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Come on up.
I had not heard from the architect, Eric.
If you will just sign, there should be a sign-in sheet there, if you will just sign in.
Sure.
We certainly heard about this in committee, but if you could just tell us in general what the, what the project is, please.
Yeah, so, we're, it's Homewood Animal Hospital, we're over in West Homewood. Currently, we have five veterinarians on staff with us, and we see a good portion of the city of Homewood. And with that, we have grown tremendously and have three exam rooms, but we need to expand our space to open it up, so with the new project, it removes the runs that we're no longer using for boarding, and adds some exam rooms and some extra surgery and treatment area for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I would just like to comment, they are my veterinarian, and the space is a little cramped inside, and I can totally see their need for growth, and that's a good, it will make the parking much better, which is currently not great for patients, and then I think it'll just give them more room to, to treat more animals, because there's a lot of people taking their, their pets there, and I think the design looks great, and I liked what he's done to make it fit on the space, so I'm just, I'm a, I'm a fan, thank you.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, will you give us the first reading, please?
Yes. It's an ordinance to approve the final development plan as required by the West Homewood zoning district for the property described in section one below and in the exhibit A attached here, too, whereas the planning commission has favorably recommended approval of the final development plan required by the West Homewood District for the property described here. Now therefore, we're ordained by the city council that the final development plan for the following described parcel of property at five-oh-one Scott Street, legal script attached to exhibit A is being the same as approved pursuant to the plan attached as exhibit B is provided for in section two below, that from and after the enactment of this ordinance and approval by the mayor of the development plan attached exhibit B shall control the uses and restrictions applicable to the property. Section three, that November twenty-seventh at six o'clock P.M. is the time and place for the public hearing. Section four, that the clerk is given notice as required by law. Section five, that any part of provisioned ordinance declared to be unconstitutional, all other parts are not affected thereby, shall be in full, remain in full force and effect. Section six, the ordinance shall become effective merely upon passage by the city council approval by the mayor, otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Wolverton, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President White?
Yes. All right, so that is eleven to zero, and now I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith and second by Mr. Wolverton, and another roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President White?
Yes, so that is also eleven to zero, and will be ordinance twenty-eight eighty-three. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, which brings us to our amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved, eleven to zero, which brings us to other new business. And I'm just going to point this out so that everyone understands why I'm being a little inconsistent tonight from what I am doing. We have a number of sign variances that are coming up, and I have, you know, recently, because of people not being ready at the time that we had our public hearing, I have been not setting these until after they have gone through committee. Because committee meetings are at such odd times for the last month of the year, I don't think it's fair to ask them to wait, and Mr. Pugh has assured me that all of these people will be ready when, for the public hearings that I'm about to set. So, so anyway, that's why I'm doing it differently. Once we get past the first of the year, we're going to go back to the other way to make sure that we get these things handled and that with a public hearing that everyone's ready for at the time that it's held. All right, so the first item, twelve-eleven twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a sign variance at thirty-four thirty Independence Drive, brought to us by Lynn Everts and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that public hearing for December eleventh at six P.M. Next item, thirteen-eleven twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for, for consideration of sign variances for Hero Donuts at seventeen twenty-six twenty-eight Avenue South, brought to us by Pahekas Restaurant Group, Don Hawes signage and Wyatt Pugh. We will also set that one for December eleventh at six P.M. Next item, fourteen-eleven twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a sign variance at twenty-eight hundred Highway two eighty, brought to us by Bricktops Restaurant and Diane Foley of Scott Services and Wyatt Pugh. We will also set that one for December eleven at six P.M. Next item, fifteen-eleven twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for consideration of sign variances for Luca Restaurant and Market at seventeen twenty-two twenty-eight Avenue South, brought to us by Pahekas Restaurant Group and Don Hawes signage and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that one for December eleventh at six P.M. as well. And at least one more, sixteen-eleven twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for consideration of sign variances for sliced pizza at ten-ten Oxmore Road, brought to us by J.J. Thomas of Edgewood Properties and Candace Watson signage and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that one for December eleventh at six P.M. as well. All right, we have already removed seventeen-eleven twenty-three, we've dropped that from the agenda when we approved it, which takes us to eighteen-eleven twenty-three, request to set a public hearing for consideration to approve the amended development plan at eight hundred Lake Shore Drive for Sanford University to permit the proposed construction of a new five-story, five hundred fifteen-bed freshman residence hall comprising a total of one hundred forty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-seven GSP, intended to accommodate the university's ongoing student housing needs. This is brought to us by Caleb Martin of L.B.Y.D. Engineering in Sanford. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with an eight to zero favorable recommendation. Just in case anyone's wondering, this is actually on Sanford's campus proper, it's in the middle of campus, it's, it's not anything outside of that. That public hearing will be set for January eighth at six P.M. All right, next item, nineteen-eleven twenty-three, request for consideration of an ABC O-20 Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Mexi Kings LLC, DBA Mexi Kings Grill, located at eight-oh-one Greens Springs Highway, brought to us by Melody Salter. Mr. Gualtney, I think we have a letter of no objection from fire.
That's correct.
Have we, do we have one from police?
We do not have the letter from police, so I'd make the motion that pending police's release and approval of the license, we'll grant.
For having no objection to the license?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Mr. Wolverton. Any questions or comments?
Let me ask, where, where is this on Greens Springs, eight-oh-one?
Where is the Trent Massey?
It was the old Trent Massey.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved conditionally, or we have no objection conditionally, on receiving from police, and that's eleven to zero. All right, next item, twenty-eleven twenty-three, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign contract and pay fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four budget appropriation for United Way Meals on Wheels, Exceptional Foundation, and the Birmingham Zoo. These are items that have already been approved in budget, this is just authorizing the mayor to go ahead and sign the contracts now that we have received them. So, we'll take those one at a time. The first one will be Meals on Wheels. Any questions or comments about that one?
I just want to mention that I will abstain, since I work at United Way.
Got it, thank you.
And I would, I would move to approve.
All right, so we have a motion for Ms. Smith and a second from Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention, so that will be ten-zero-one, and will be resolution twenty-three one seventy-three. All right, next, we'll do the Exceptional Foundation, any questions or comments on that one? Not, entertain a motion and a second?
So moved. Sorry, second.
Who was the first, I'm sorry.
Was it Andy?
So, Mr. Gualtney, motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is eleven to zero, and will be resolution twenty-three one seventy-four. And lastly, for the Birmingham Zoo, any questions or comments? Not, entertain a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Harden, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also approved, eleven to zero, and will be resolution twenty-three one seventy-five. All right, next item, twenty-one eleven twenty-three, request to change the council meeting dates for January twenty-twenty-four. This is my item. I think we've announced these before, but just so, to make sure everyone's on the same page, on January eighth, we will do both committees and council. On January twenty-second, we will do committees, and on January twenty-ninth, we will have our second council meeting of the month.
Right.
Yep, so, January eighth, we will do committees and council, and then on January twenty-second, we will do just committees, and on January twenty-ninth, we will have a full council meeting. All right, so I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Geer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's approved, eleven to zero, and will be resolution twenty-three one seventy-six. Next item, twenty-two eleven twenty-three, request to authorize the mayor to sign engagement letter with Car Riggs Ingram, brought to us by Robert Riggett and Melody Salter. As most of y'all know, that department has been unfortunate, just in terms of bodies, we've had.
Let's not use that word.
Someone, someone have an accident, we've, so they are underhanded right now, shorthanded right now. It's not underhanded, sorry. Shorthanded.
Yeah, let's, let's.
It's been a long day. Shorthanded, and need some help, and this is the quickest way to get them help, particularly given that the personal board doesn't have anyone on their list to fit the spots that we need. So, that's why we're doing this and why we're doing it quickly and not going through finance. So, anyone got any questions?
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is eleven to zero, and will be resolution twenty-three one seventy-seven. All right, last item, twenty-three eleven twenty-three, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of November seventh, twenty-twenty-three through November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, brought to us by Robert Riggett and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones, is this, is this Mr. Harden?
Yes, I had the nice pleasure of going through all the bills and had a few questions that Robert was kind enough today to answer for me, so I make a motion to prove the voucher for a period of November seventh, twenty-twenty-three through November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Harden, we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved, eleven to zero, and will be resolution twenty-three one seventy-eight, which brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Nothing tonight, just a flyer about the parade next week.
Looking forward to it, thank you. Mr. Gualtney?
I have no comments this evening, and I do not need to set Public Safety, because there are currently no agenda items.
All right, Ms. Geer?
So, the Arts Council would like me to make a couple of announcements. First, I think I've already mentioned that they are providing entertainment at the senior center luncheon on December the fourteenth. Dolores Haidak will do a special thirty-minute program for them, and they're happy to do that for our seniors. And then also, everybody has a little flyer tonight at your podium. On February fourth, they are sponsoring Shaun of the South and Three on a String. I think the high school auditorium holds over a thousand people, and they're hoping for a sellout. So the Arts Council would like me to make a couple of announcements. First, I think I've already mentioned that they are providing entertainment at the senior center luncheon on December the fourteenth. Dolores Hydak will do a special thirty-minute program for them, and they're happy to do that for our seniors. And then also, everybody has a little flyer tonight at your podium. On February fourth, they are sponsoring Shaun of the South and Three on a String. I think the high school auditorium holds over a thousand people, and they're hoping for a sellout. It's a great performance. It's been, that performance has been sold out across the state at least once or twice before. They'll not only benefit the high school on their trip, the band on their trip to Dublin, but just provide a fun show for our citizens. So please support that. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
Yeah, I just want to announce that Carla Dumontier and Cynthia Estery have been selected as library champions by the Jefferson County Public Library Association. Carla's being recognized for her service on the library board and foundation, and Cynthia's being recognized for two years as foundation president during the pandemic. We thank them for their service and for being recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
I don't know if I actually mentioned this, but about a month ago, six, five or six weeks ago, maybe, we had the, the Environmental Commission had their tree giveaway. Henry Hughes came and spoke. There were lots and lots of trees that were given out, so I'm excited about that. We got one that we were looking for placement and just had the line locations to make sure we don't hit anything when we look to plant it. But I wanted to congratulate them and thank the city for their support in getting the Arbor Day designation again. We had a great West Homewood Turkey Trot last Thursday morning. It's the biggest they've had in seven years. There had to have been close to three hundred people, probably, so it was fun to kind of see a bunch of neighbors come together and do something fun and informal together. And then West Homewood Tree Lighting is going to be Friday. I believe caroling starts at six-thirty, and the tree lighting itself is supposed to be at seven o'clock, right there at Patriot Park. We do have, I think, one item for Public Works, so I was going to set that for after finance. And then the only other thing was that unfortunately, a week ago, I had the experience of seeing our Homewood Dispatch kind of go through their regular routine day. I've been hearing through some of the dispatch network and got to see those guys move quickly and in action. Fortunately, we didn't have anything super time-critical, but it was on my mind as we talked about ambulance services and everything else about our own condition and whether or not, in my mind, it warranted utilizing that, that service. We had a little accident on the Lake Shore Trail, and fortunately, they came and kind of helped us out and made sure everything was, was good to go, and my little guy got a cast on his arm. He did break his arm, but I'm just thankful for our city staff and firefighters and EMS and police that are out there every day, twenty-four-seven, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Just wanted to say I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Also, I want to express my appreciation for the school board for, and the school system for hosting Homewood staff at Hall Kent back middle of the month for their Thanksgiving luncheon. It was fantastic. Also, the beautification board is promoting the menorah lighting, which is next, or two Mondays from now, December eleventh, so please add that to your plans. It'll be five P.M. in front of Track Shack. We'll have some music and food, and then five-thirty will be the official ceremony, and then council will be at six that evening as well, so you can make a night of it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Finance at six, and I apologize I will miss the parade this year. I have a concert, so anyway, it's, I'll be thinking about you, but.
Which concert?
AC/DC again?
Almost, yeah. This is my last concert with the Birmingham Boys Choir.
Is it really?
My son is in eleventh grade, so this is his last concert, and I'll be, they invite the dads every other year, so it's my last one, so anyway, appreciate it. Nothing further.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
Definitely need to set special issues for all the sign variances, so I'll set that to follow Public Works, and I'm excited about the Shaun of the South and the Three on a String. I think that sounds really, really fun, so I plan to get tickets for that. I'm super excited about the parade and the star lighting, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I'll be able to share some fun plans that the park board is approving for the renovation of the playground at Central Park. There's some really cool ideas and some fun things that are going to happen over there. We got to see a video of all the fun stuff that's going in at our last park board meeting, and they're even coming up with a plan to incorporate the caterpillar into something, because it's not going to be able to be on the playground, because it does not meet code anymore. So we're going to, we're going to incorporate it into a fun design that'll be, that'll be, keep its spirit alive, and hopefully be able to bring that to y'all and show some things in the next couple of weeks. So excited about that. Hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving, and that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nelms?
Nothing from me tonight.
All right, Ms. Andrews?
I do want to set PND to follow the very long special issues meeting that we have. There's no reason for, well, there's no reason, because I think half my committees are on your committee anyway, so I will set that. I do want to say congratulations to Carolyn Buck of the Freshwater Land Trust, Director of the Red Rock Trail System. She has been named one of BBJ's top forty and forty, so Homewood's own Carolyn Buck. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Harden?
Just want to tell everybody how grateful I am for them. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. I don't have anything other than to say, if you haven't driven by the Pocket Park on Salter recently, you should make an effort to do it. It is very much taking shape. I've already, I've already seen people on the Pocket Park, which probably aren't supposed to be there, but with their dogs running around on the grass.
It's like phase two of the Greenway.
But it, it, people are, people are excited about it. I get, I've already gotten tons of comments on it. It looks great. Like I said, if you haven't been, it's not finished yet. It's not ready yet, but it, you can already see how great it's going to look, and it really is fantastic, so.
It's the same thing about phase two of the Greenway, by the way. Lots of people have run the entire new extension that has not been opened yet.
It's not open yet, yeah, uh-huh. Same sort of thing.
Tom Spencer said it looks great.
Yeah. That every inch of it looks great, yeah, uh-huh. All right, so that's it for tonight. We will adjourn the meeting and see everyone in a couple of weeks. Thanks.